A meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands alone, united, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rector, may we have the oral call, please?
Okay, that's a good one. That's a good one. Good boy.
Chair Steven Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Esther Cummings?
Here.
Commissioner Deb Natchin?
Here.
Commissioner Patty Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Pratt?
Commissioner Pratt did contact the staff before the meeting that he would not be available, so if there's no objection, it would be appropriate to excuse his absence for this evening.
Do we need a motion to do that?
As long as there's no objection, you can simply chair a note for the minutes.
If there's no objection, we'll excuse Commissioner Pratt tonight.
Chair, you have a quorum.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Go ahead, motion? Is there a need to change the calendar tonight?
There's no change, there's no need for motion, you can accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, then if there are no objections, we will accept the agenda as presented. Moving on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes each. Is there anybody who would like to say something tonight? On an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will close oral communications. We have the consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar tonight. The meeting minutes of January 20th, 2015, and those of December 1st, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Solved.
Go ahead, a second?
A second.
Three, and that motion's approved.
We have a problem, please. Four in favor. The motion passes. And the consent calendar is approved.
Esther.
No, this one, thank you. I'm going to do this. Moving on to the public hearings, we have the first item tonight on the agenda is conditional use permit 14-8. And we have the staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman Sloan and fellow commissioners. Tonight I have item two, which is at 981 Pacific Coast Highway as conditional use permit CUP 14-8 to permit the service of beer and wine and establish an outdoor eating area in conjunction with a proposed sandwich shop. As you can see, the site location, it's at the northeast corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Bolsa Avenue in the Seal Beach Center. The location we're talking about is boxed in yellow, and it's a pad tenant of 950 square feet located next to the Pavilion Grocery Store, CVS, drugstore, and numerous mixed-use retail tenants. As you can see, the parking lot is adequate in size, and between the years of 2006 and 2009, there was a parking study that was conducted for this particular center, and there was a shared parking agreement that was agreed upon at that time. Since that time, we have had several different retail uses move out, in particular, the hair salon, that freed up even more spaces. I'm mentioning this because parking with fast food restaurants, it's a more intense use, and it does become a concern, but with the reduction in parking and the previous parking study, we should have more than adequate parking at this site. As you can see, the floor plan here, there is one little change in this floor plan. There are approximately seven serving tables located in this outdoor eating area. You have these five, this one located right here, and then a seating area located right here. The area out here was discussed with the applicant, and those are no longer going to be located out there, as you'll see in other slides. The interior of the restaurant is mainly kitchen and counter area for the preparation of the sandwiches. Right here, there will be a railing that will be installed to surround the outdoor eating area, and with the consumption of alcohol, this will break it up from just anyone being able to come into this eating area. Also, there will be landscaping that will be installed to separate the drive area or drive aisle that's located right along this area from the patrons who are at the establishment. Also, there is a bike rack here located in this area so that people can not only drive to this location, but they can ride their bikes, and also pedestrian traffic will be able to get to this establishment. The elevations of this establishment are not going to change from what you've seen out there if you've been to the location. I also have some photos of the location. There is going to be a pickup window on the outside. The only real change is this door that's located right in this area will be installed so that customers can come from the cashier area out into that outdoor eating area. This is currently the drive-through that was utilized under the previous occupant, and that door that I was discussing is located right here where this red sign's located. This will be the entrance, the main entrance into the establishment, and then exiting out here, and there will also be, let's go back. There's also a gate located right here in this area. I've spoken to the applicant, and he is also for security purposes because they will have an attendant out in the dining area at all times when alcohol's being served and when occupants are out there. If there's no one out there, then there won't be someone standing out there, but he's also discussed putting cameras in so that they will have, be able to monitor not only with an attendant, but from the inside. I have put on the dais today, a support letter for you to take a look at, and with that, staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit 14-8 to permit the service of beer and wine and the outdoor dining area in conjunction with a sandwich shop. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
I just wanted to also clarify that there is additional inside seating, appears to me, at a bar along the window, across from the counter.
There are a few seats right at the front window, yes.
There'll be six seats there, so.
Correct.
Okay. And I also wondered if the people, how the process will work. Will the people come in and order their food, and then go and sit down outside, and will the food be brought to them, or do they carry it themselves, haul it into the patio area?
That I would allow the applicant, who is here tonight, to answer that, but from my recollection, it's they will order upfront, and I believe they take it out to them.
Okay, because I was curious about that. I also wondered if there were any provisions for inclement weather, because if it's cold or rainy, there's only a place for six people to sit inside, so I wondered if there's any kind of an awning, or heaters, or anything else planned for out there, too?
Not that I know of at this time. There were going to be lighting, if you, if we look back in this area, there are some lines that go through here where lighting was going to be installed, but no awnings or canopies at this time.
Okay. It is on the sort of shady side of the building. It'll be somewhat protected by the building, so. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. I do have a couple of questions. I visited the site, and where they want to put the outdoor seating had been the drive-through, and there's a curb like this that pretty much separates the seating from the driveway, or where traffic is going back and forth. Now, I know they're going to put something up higher, but I guess my concern is the proximity of the tables to the traffic. It's probably going to be like this. There's not that much room at all. So I have a concern about the traffic being so close to the seating area, and I also have a concern, if they serve alcohol, how they get out of there with drinks? That's very easy, and that's not. You can't walk around, you can't exit an establishment with a glass of beer or a glass of wine in your hand. And what arrangements, you know, can they, how do they get out of there? I mean, if the fence is going to be this high, somebody, you know, can jump it if they want. Somebody can be driving by and just hand them something if they wanted. I have a concern about that. So, that's what I would like to see, because I know there's a place over in the other center where they do have beer and wine, but the outdoor seating is such that there's no way to get to the outside, outside, so you've got to go back in through the restaurant to exit. If you want to sit outside, you only access it from the inside of the restaurant. So, those are my concerns.
How high is that railing there that borders the street, or the part of the parking lot?
It's approximately 42 inches.
So it's almost four feet high?
Correct.
And this is a steel railing?
It's wrought iron.
Wrought iron.
And it's a railing only, it's not made into like a fence?
It's, it will have bars in between it.
Okay.
And there will also be landscaping along that area.
And the landscaping involves planters, large planters, that might protect you from traffic a little bit? Is that true?
At this, at this current time, they are not proposed. The plants will be planted directly into the planter area.
I see. And these are large plants?
They vary in different sizes. I mean, we have some of the palm trees out there currently. There are some pygmy palms, different types of shrubs.
We'll give you time to speak a little bit later.
I was just going to say, it looks to me like they're almost four feet wide. The new planter box is much wider than what you saw. So it's, it's as big, the width is the same as the width of the tables, so it's pretty substantial.
Has staff looked at this problem, and do they think there's an issue here with safety?
It's hard to anticipate what can happen with there being not a lot of maneuvering around that area. It's relatively a straight shot from one way to another.
Mr. Chair, if I may interject.
Please.
The planter that's being proposed is four feet wide, which is generally consistent with the width of most walkways that are required in commercial centers like this, so a four-foot wide width is fairly standard to separate a vehicle from any other type of use, and that is why the four-foot width landscape area is being provided. Also, in regard to the comment raised earlier with regard to the 42-inch railing and passing alcohol above or past, that is in compliance with what the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control requires. They have a minimum requirement of 42 inches, no higher, so we are in compliance with what the state regulations are.
Thank you. And the, and the gate at the end, there's one exit, apparently, in the patio.
Correct. There is an exit in that area, and that is why staff did work with the business owner, and they have agreed to have employees staff that outdoor dining area during all times that there are customers in the area.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item tonight?
Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to allow the applicant to speak first.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Please.
Please, please come forward.
First of all, it's been a pleasure to work with the Planning Commission and the people, the staff at the department. They've been very, very helpful. So I want to thank them for preparing this and making us prepared for what we need to do.
Excuse me, sir, if you could just state your name for the record, please.
My name's Larry Drum. My wife and I, Joanne, we, our children were raised here in Seal Beach, and we went to Magal. Seal Beach Swim Club president, so we're fully familiar with the small town nature of Seal Beach. We really believe in our restaurant concept because the sandwiches are really good, and I think we've fit in with this community very, very well. We have spent a lot of time considering the safety features, especially with the leaseholder regency centers, and they are all for us using that drive-through area as a patio, and we wanted to maximize the use of that patio by attracting people off of PCH, people who might not normally stop in Seal Beach and have a meal, but will stop and safely park their bikes in those bike racks, and we can make that exit of that drive-through even safer. We do like the concept of that back gate. It does help us with some of the delivery of the products, since it's going to be a small store, we may have multiple deliveries during the day. Having said that, we do worry about kids in the area, kids with the alcohol issues, and as a physician and as a parent, I will do everything I can to make sure that alcohol use is done with dignity and by the rules. Do you guys have any specific questions for me at all?
I don't have one. You know, I looked at the site today, I thought, it's really too bad there aren't windows on the PCH side of the building, because that little parking area in there, but it may have a great little outdoor restaurant. You'd see it from PCH, it wouldn't be in the line of the cars and everything, and I thought, that would be ideal, but they didn't put a window there.
Yeah, in fact, on that side of Pacific Coast Highway, there's a ladder that goes straight down that building, and it's a bit of an eyesore, but hopefully with some signage and nice plants out there, we can really make that a nicer, appealing wall, but you're absolutely right about the windows.
And that would have been a great little spot, you know, for outdoor seating. You'd be more protected from the traffic going back and forth in the center, you'd be seen at PCH, and, you know, and you're right, you know, to really use a restaurant like that, when Debbie Edwards and Susan Cooper had the Daily Grind, and they added, you know, little munchies to go with your coffee, it was a great success. And, you know, the fact that, you know, you're local, that's a big plus, because this community is not big on multinational companies coming into Seal Beach. You know, this is who we are.
This is a concept that grew out of Chagrin Falls, Ohio, and it does well in very small towns. This will probably be the 12th franchise that ever came out of the franchise, and so we tried these sandwiches back there, and we've visited four or five other stores. They have one in San Antonio, they have one in Atlanta, and it does do very, very well in small towns.
Are there any questions of Mr. Drum?
I assume that you've got two exits from the outdoor seating area? You need to have an exit to the outside.
You do.
You know, you really do. I'm just curious, as to the precautions, so that people wouldn't exit with an open
We have to police that and do our best to make sure that that doesn't happen. The other, the other side of this is, is that we actually wanted to do craft beers. We really don't want to go after schooners or volume drinking, so hopefully, when you attract a craft beer crowd, then maybe they won't be sneaking like the other population might do with the schooner crowds, so hopefully that won't happen.
Well, you've also got coaches right across the way, so if somebody wants to be a two-fisted beer drinker, that's where they'll go. Not at a sandwich shop.
Yeah.
So, that's what it is. That's what it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony on this issue, and shall I hear a motion? Or do we have discussion first? Is there?
We can have discussion if we want.
I'm good. I think we've discussed it.
Go ahead, a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
That's four in favor. The motion carries, and your conditional use permit is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Drum. I look forward to trying one of these subs. Approval of CUP 14-8 is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision to the City Council. The appeal period begins tomorrow morning. The next item on the agenda is variance 14-1. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening. The subject site is a rectangular-shaped parcel located on the northwest corner of Eighth Street and Ocean Avenue within the RHD 20 zone. The parcel is currently developed with a one-story, single-family residence and attached two-car garage that is built all the way up to the rear property line. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structures and construct a two-story residence with an attached garage on the property. The Seal Beach Municipal Code requires minimum setbacks for residential dwellings. In order to construct a new two-story residence on the subject site, the applicant must maintain a 12-foot front yard setback, a 5-foot interior side setback, a 7-and-a-half-foot street-side setback, and a 24-foot rear yard setback. The applicant is requesting approval of a variance to reduce the required 24-foot rear yard setback to nine feet. Most of the surrounding properties consist of lots that range from 25 feet in width to 110 to 117 feet in length, and abut an alley in the rear. RHD 20 properties are required to provide a rear yard of 24 feet minus the width of the alley. In most cases, the alley is 15 feet wide, so a nine-foot rear yard setback is required for these properties. The subject site has property dimensions of 49.99 feet in width by 65 feet in depth, and does not abut an alley at the rear, so the subject site must provide the full 24-foot rear setback. By applying the strict application of the setback requirements, the lot would have substantially less in buildable area as compared to a typical lot in the vicinity that is 25 feet in width by 110 feet in length, thereby making it difficult to construct a single-family home with an attached two-car garage. The strict application of the city setback requirements would create an undue hardship because of the lot's unique size and shape. The required setbacks and distance requirements would deny the applicant the ability to enjoy the same privileges as other property owners within the same vicinity and residential zone. Staff believes the variance is warranted in this circumstance due to the unique circumstance applicable to the property. The request to reduce the rear yard setback from 24 feet to nine feet is not a request for special privileges, because nine feet is the average setback for most RHD 20 properties within the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of resolution 15-5, and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff?
I do. Is this a single, will this be a single-family residence or a multi-tenant?
Single-family residence.
Okay, because one of the maps said multi-tenant.
The property just north of the subject site is a multi-tenant property.
Okay. Poor guy in the north's going to lose his ocean view. That's the way it goes.
That's going to happen whether there's a setback or not, right?
Well, you know, it's just like the conversation we had today. People are just maximizing their property here in Old Town. It's so valuable, you just can't blame them to make the most of it.
Any other questions of staff? Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make a statement or comment?
Mr. Chairman, in the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Excuse me, can you tell us your name for the record?
I'm Marge Zimmerman, and I'm the applicant for the variance. I've been, as well, very pleased to work with the staff and worked closely to try and maximize the site, but not hopefully overbuild the site, and design a house that will complement some of the other residences in the area, and so, I don't really have much other than that. If you have any questions about the property, I'm here to, here to answer them.
And who's the owner?
The owner is actually a trust that we control. Yeah. Who asked that question?
So is it going to be owner occupied?
Yes, it's owner occupied.
Okay, owner occupied, so you're just there.
That's correct.
Okay. How long has the trust owned the property?
It was bought about two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
About two years ago. I don't think that property had traded hands for a good number of years.
It looks like it's a par thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it was. I think the previous owner had owned it for almost 40-some years.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drum. Thank you very much.
I think so. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we will close public testimony on this item. Do we have a, well, I'd like to make a comment. I think this is a beautiful piece of property. I was by, I looked at it, you're going to have a lovely place there when this is, this is built, if it's approved. That's my only comment.
It'll be beautiful when it's done.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
The vote is four in favor, and the motion passes, and your variance is approved, Mrs. Zimmerman. Approval of variance 14-1 is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision to the City Council. Appeal period begins tomorrow morning. That concludes public hearing items. Mr. Rector, do we have a report tonight?
Two very quick items. Jim didn't want me to apologize for his absence tonight. He is going to be out all week, actually, with the Orange County Fire Authority. He's assisting in their week-long employment application process. There's several tests and a lot of in-depth interviews, apparently, that goes on with that, so he's going to be there all week long. That's the reason why he wasn't able to attend tonight. Second item, preparation of the packets. We do understand that with moving the date, we gave you less time to review, so we are trying to make sure that we're getting everything
that we're getting everything together on our end to deliver packets on Wednesdays. We can't always guarantee that other things come into play from time to time. But that is our goal, and we are going to be trying to meet that for you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
It was helpful this time to get it on Thursday because then we... Since the meeting wasn't until Tuesday, we had our regular five days. So that was great. But we had the same thing.
It really helps if we can get it on Thursday because that way, we have questions, we can call in on Friday. It's very hard to get you guys on Monday with your staff meeting in the morning.
Especially if they're closed on a Monday.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments, I should say?
I have one, which is just a curiosity thing. This property we just voted on has an Ocean Avenue address. However, the entrance faces 8th Street. Why isn't the address on 8th Street? Seems odd to me.
Well, the front property line is the narrowest portion of the lot facing the street. So the ocean side is actually the front property line.
Okay.
That has some factor usually in addressing where your front property line is. That's usually where your address lies. With corner lots, just depending on when the tract was developed and when the addressing was assigned for an area, sometimes that does change.
Because it seems sort of odd. They're going to have to put an address on the ocean side so that people looking for their home... It's sort of... Because it's just... I think it's just kind of awkward that the front door doesn't face the street that the address is on. But I guess that's the way it is.
What do you have to go through to legally change an address from, say, like, Ocean Avenue to 8th Street?
You would have to submit the request. And every city is a little different. In this city, we will submit the request to the building department. The building official would then have to be sure that there isn't any other address with a similar number, same number. It falls within the sequence. And then we would notify all the surrounding agencies, the post office, Edison, all the utilities and everybody.